The Honorable Speaker, Taraba State House of Assembly, the Right Honourable John Kizito Bonzena and all the members of the State House of Assembly present here. My Lord, the Honourable Chief Judge of Taraba State, the Honourable Justice Philip Ousagia. My Lord, the Grand Caddy and the President, Customs and Border Court of Appeal to our State and all judges of the State High Court, Sharia Court of Appeal and the State Customs and Border Court of Appeal. The Honourable Commissioners and members of the State Executive Council, the Chief of Staff, Government House Administration to His Excellency, the Head of Civil Service, the Party Chairman, Alaji Abu Bakar Bawa and who is also the Treasurer of the Conference of PDP Party Chairman across the states of the country. Special Advisors, Senior Special Assistance, Board Chairman and Members and distinguished invited guests. And let me especially recognise the friend of Taraba State, Baris Tanjoku. You're welcome, sir. Gentlemen of the praise, ladies and gentlemen, it is my singular honour and privilege to welcome you to this auspicious occasion to mark the second year anniversary of the administration of His Excellency, Governor Abu Kefaz. He will all recall that on this very day, 29th May 2023, His Excellency was inaugurated as the elected Governor of Taraba State. It was on this day that His Excellency subscribed to the Order of Office. As we mark this second day, second year anniversary, may I seize this opportunity to congratulate His Excellency and his leadership and those who have walked tirelessly across the board to ensure we are where we are today. Your Excellency, you will recall that on this very day as you are inaugurated, Taraba State was in a security topsit over. The state's headquarters journey was not spared from the activities of bandits. We had kidnappings in the morning, kidnappings in the afternoon, kidnappings in the mid-afternoon, kidnappings in the evening, kidnappings in the mid-evening, kidnapping in the wee hours of the morning. Nobody was spared. Taraba State was in perpetual fear. And I will recall, on that same day, His Excellency did not have an official car to drive him from Jolly Yani Stadium to the office. There was no official car. And even if a private car was prepared, there was no office for His Excellency to occupy. His Excellency had to start from a makeshift office in what is called the visitors' wing of the escort chambers. But because of the unwavering and resolute commitment and determination of His Excellency, His Excellency told some of us that even if it meant serving under a tree, he was going to serve. As if the devil wanted to test the commitment of His Excellency, few days to the inauguration of His Excellency, there was an attempt to kidnap our mother, the mother of the governor, in her residence. But that attempt was aborted. That amongst several other kidnappings of high-profile public officers and individuals of the state propelled His Excellency to first of all resolve to tackle these dare devils in the state. Two years down the line, Your Excellency, we can comfortably report to the people of Taraba and the whole world that today, with your determination, with your commitment in terms of personal supervision and resources and the doggedness and determination of the security apparatus, Taraba is a safe place for everybody to live. Your Excellency, the people of Taraba State, thank you. Today, you go into Taraba State Government House, you will be proud to be a Taraban, to know that at least the governor has a place to live. Today, you go around the state, you will see footprints that are executed in just two years. The abandoned abattoir market, multi-billion era project has been completed. The multi-billion era palliative market has been completed. The school of nursing and midwifery school that was abundant is 98% completed. The trailer park that was not existent to remove the traffic congestion on our highways has been constructed and completed. The college of agric that here too was like a secondary school is being given a first lift for a befitting tertiary education. The airport that when we came in, you can only land one flight through a special formation has been reconstructed and remodelled and recently commissioned by the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Your Excellency, permit me, I'm not reading your speech, but just to introduce to Tarabans and the world where this journey started, where we are today. And Your Excellency, what more can I say? That this ultra-multi-billion era banquet hall, TY Dajuma House, the best of its kind in northern Nigeria, sir, was constructed within two years. Your Excellency, within this period, over 151 new vehicles were purchased for our security agents. 133 vehicles rehabilitated for our security agents, including fire service, our ambulances, etc. Your Excellency, for the people of Taraba State, we have nothing to tell you than to say thank you. And we thank you for this leadership in two years you've given us. Thank you for the sleepless night you've given to the people of Taraba State. Thank you for the stable leadership, the unwavering stewardship to our motherland, Taraba State. Your Excellency, it is on this note that I therefore have the singular honour and privilege to welcome each and everyone to the second anniversary of the government of the governor and people of Taraba State, His Excellency Dr Abu Kefaz. Thank you very much and God bless you. I see today as a day of reflection. A moment not just to speak, but to reconnect with you, the people of Taraba, on our shared journey. Two years ago, I made a commitment not to deliver perfection, but to lead with compassion, courage and conviction. That commitment stands firm today. In these two years, we have made visible progress. But more importantly, we have built a foundation quietly, intentionally and with you at the centre of it all. In the past, our schools were collapsing. Families carried the burden alone. Today, education is free and compulsory. Additionally to that, we have purchased uniforms, sandals, school materials, digital tablets, school bags and books, which will be distributed very soon. We have also paid for WAEC, NECO, NAPTEC, MOOC and BSE exams. Currently, construction of 60 modern schools is ongoing across the state as our pilot projects because the infrastructures in our school is not my standard for our children. Previously, security was fragile and uncoordinated. Now, we have deployed hundreds of operational and patrol vehicles, more than 1,000 motorcycles for special security purposes and introduced modern tracking tools. We have military forward operating bases in a place in Wukari and Karim Lameindo local government areas to strengthen security across borders and vulnerable communities. Until 2023, civil servants were uncertain of their pay and future. Today, we have stabilized salaries, commenced minimum wage reforms and restored dignity to public service. Before now, civil service morale and structure had weakened. Today, our civil service is being restored with dignity and purpose. Since inauguration, we have introduced transformative reforms that show our deep commitment to excellence in public service. We have implemented the new minimum wage structure, becoming one of the first three states in Nigeria to do so, paying 30% and 7% increment within the same year 2024. Salaries are now promptly ensuring financial stability for our workforce. We clear gratuities areas dating back to 2010 to 2020, 2013, bringing relief to long-retired civil servants. We also restore running courses to all MDAs, ensuring uninterrupted service delivery. We procure annual personnel evaluation report for all staff, fostering a system of accountability and growth still on civil servants. Over 200 civil servants have been promoted, recognizing their contributions and encouraging merit-based advancement. We expanded training programs for all cadres, permanent secretaries, directors, judicial officials and legislators. These are not gestures. They reflect our belief that a motivated, well-equipped civil service is the engine of effective governance. Before this administration, there was no comprehensive development master plan for Taraba. Now, we are guided by the Taraba State Development Master Plans 2023 to 2050. So now that means we can embark on infrastructure programs, roads, bridges and other infrastructures in the state. Additionally to this, there was a time when land management was chaotic. Today, we have launched the Tages, that is Taraba Geographic Information Service. Previously also, illegal mining, danger lives and the environment. Now, we have sanitized the mining sector and opened it to lawful, regulated investments. A new monitoring structure will be put in place to replace the existing tax force. Not long ago, our healthcare system was overwhelmed. Now, we are building new facilities in the College of Nursing and Midwifery, expanding rural outreach and modernizing our health system. Historically, climate change was neglected. Today, we are addressing the true reforestation, erosion control and global climate adaptation strategies. Until recently, local government lacked autonomy. Now, we have held democratic elections and restored full local government financial and administrative authority. We are governing with sensitivity to the economic hardship affecting our people. We understand the rising cost of living. That is why we have cut waste and redirected funds towards education, healthcare, food systems and youth empowerment. We don't claim that all is well, but everything is being done to make it better. To our critics who have constructively challenged us, we say thank you. To our traditional rulers, thank you for your support, your guidance, standing firm as custodians of peace and wisdom. May God continue to bless you all. To the federal government under President Bola, M. Tinibu, GCON, we thank you for all your support in security, infrastructure and palliative relief, especially in difficult times like this. To the World Bank, European Union, United Nations agencies and other development partners, thank you for working with us. And to you, the good people of Taraba, this journey is yours. Trust must be earned. Therefore, I pledge to you monthly public briefings by the Ministry of Information. I also pledge to you quarterly local government area governance forums to be led by chairman and state officials in the various local government. I also pledge to you full public reporting through the Tages. I pledge to you a celebration of unsung heroes, who are the teachers, farmers, healthcare workers, youth, special people and our mothers. Above all, I pledge to be a governor who shows up in times of progress and in times of pain. My people, you don't need a perfect leader. What you need is a present one who is sensitive to your voice and I remain yours in service and in humility. The future we envision is practical, inclusive and bold. We will, in the near future, train youth in artificial intelligence and digital innovation. We will expand vocational programs across all the existing local government and the two special development areas. We will strengthen tourism, develop economic zones and boost agric businesses. We also promote climate resilience and rural electrification. We will continue to build unity across all communities and we'll make Taraba a leader in ease of doing business. Now, in the area of agriculture and economic development, we have repositioned Taraba for agricultural transformation. Our farmers now receive direct support of seeds, irrigation, mechanization and training. This is just the beginning. As I often said, just as President Tinibu's agricultural vision challenges us to focus on policies, not personalities. I am building the Taraba where governance is measured not by sentiment, but by result. Now, we are shifting from promises to produce or result. Every program must deliver real value to our people. And that is why we take our time to bring our programs that are having direct impact on the citizen. Now for post-Taravest 2025, we are moving from conference room to communities now. One of our key investors that participated in the Taravest called Karomachi Prasad of Prasad Seeds. He has committed to partnering with us to train 25 Taraban youth in India as agric entrepreneurs. He is also introducing the People Initiative, that is Public-Private People Partnership to fight poverty with community-led innovation. Above all, our target is that Taraba would become the seed hope of Nigeria and Africa. My dear people, in order to secure what we have started, I have transmitted four major bills to the State Assembly: Free and Composory Basis Education Bill, 50% subsidized tertiary tuition bill, free medical care for children, the elderly and the vulnerable bill. Also, land access for youth to farm and prosper. These are not campaign promises. They are the legal foundation of a new Taraba. Let me state this for you to understand my commitment to you that even in personal tragedy, such as the loss of my sister at CKFAS, I remain strong because the call to serve you outweighs the pain. Now, join me to observe a minute silence in our honor. And also, those that were killed in Karim Lameindo crisis, may their souls rest in peace. Please sit. However, in the case of my sister Ati, preliminary police reports reveal that she died as a result of severe gunshot injuries sustained from shot by one of the police escort in the vehicle. Investigation is still ongoing to ascertain the circumstances so that justice will prevail. You can see that this work is not for applause. It is for legacy. It is for the future. It is for you all. Please, let us in a positive spirit move Taraba forward. In these two years, you can agree with me that Taraba is no longer on the sideline. We are leading with discipline, with technology, with a good heart. This is your time. This is your Taraba. Let us rise together. Let us believe again. Let us move Taraba forward. Finally, my people, it is time to spread your wings and fly beyond limitation of yesterday. And it is time also to break free from the cycle of poverty and scarcity and unlock the doors of prosperity. In this spirit, we will move Taraba forward. In response to recent crises, especially the one in Karim, I have constituted the Karim Lameindo and other areas of Violent Dispo, Peace and Justice Commission. The membership and the terms and reference will be disclosed accordingly. Thank you. May God bless you all. May God bless Taraba, the nature's gift to the nation. May God bless Nigeria. Thank you once again.
First on the list is Maga Ajibie Gago. Please stand up so that the mic can locate you. Thank you so much.
I see. The executive governor of Taraba State, the youth-friendly governor, the champion of free education in the state. I am by name Maga Ajibie Gago, Taraba boy. My question goes like this, Your Excellency. Education, we say free education, we know is a very costly project for every state, every organization or every institution. I am so glad at the inception of this government when you announced free and compulsory education in the state. But my worries immediately after that declaration was, I know Taraba State is a civil service state which who depends on federal allocations. And to some extent, at that moment, I was like, why don't His Excellency look into how to block some of the leakages in the state and also increase the internally generated revenue of the state? But went ahead and declared free education immediately. Despite the fact that it's good, we feel our state may not be able to handle it, which you all will bear me witness that the free education program in the state is facing a lot of challenges. But glory be to God, you are about to fix it. The question is now, who are your partners and how do you intend to make it work? Second, on the education aspect, why building 60 new schools when the existing ones are not in good shape? Then, next question. When do you... Sorry, next question. Unemployment is a menace in our present-day economy, which caused a lot of crisis in the state. And we all know that the civil service cannot employ our timid youths carrying all sorts of certificates all around. What plans, Your Excellency, do you have in order to engage, empower or employ the youth running mean of the street? Because we believe that a reasonable number of people are educated and unemployment has turned them to criminals, Your Excellency. These are my few questions. Thank you.
My name is Mrs Punar Mandani Latenji, the State President, National Council for Women's Societies and umbrella body of all women organizations. Sir, today, I want to say this is the best thing that has happened to Taraba State. For you to call your citizens to hear from them. We say thank you for the good things you are doing in Taraba State. I also want my is an appreciation and the question we follow because I have a lot here to ask. I want to appreciate the gender-friendly governor for giving us wonderful women as a commissioner that are making you proud in Taraba State today. And secondly, we also want to appreciate you. It was during your tenure as the governor that we have the Almighty Vero and Hadiya Batulu as a member, House of Assembly. We want to say thank you. So many SA women, you are really an inclusion governor. May God do you good. Sir, I want to stand here this afternoon to appreciate, Her Excellency, the wife of the executive governor in absentia for the wonderful things she is doing for the Taraba women. This is one woman that whatever she received from Abuja, she stepped it down to the grassroots. We are seeing the dividend of democracy in her. She is a talk-and-do mother. We really appreciate her for that kind gesture. Sir, I also want to address this issue. Appreciate you on this issue of free education. God will bless you because many children that their mothers are no more living, today they can go to school. I speak as a woman because we are the one always at the receiving end. All the problems in the family are tied to our neck. I also want to talk about the empowerment of women. You have done a lot as a governor for the women of Taraba State. We are not lying and we are not trying to flatter you. That is the truth of it. Sir, on the issue of inclusion, I want to talk about inclusion of women in security meeting. It's key, sir, because we have the man to ourselves. Every secret of the house, every secret out there, when the man is in, he exposes it to his wife. Most of the bandits today, their wives know much about them and they can tell you and they can give you a solution through a way forward. So more inclusion of women in security meeting. I also want to address the issue of climate change.
Please, please. Just ask your question.
I have, I'm not, no.
His Excellency will address all the...
It's a question in a way. I want to talk about... It's a question, in a way, I want to talk about the climate change. I'm speaking on behalf of the women, but others will still come on board. Climate change is a worrisome issue in the state, sir. It is a worrisome issue. When this issue of buying on Chaco came on board, we started calling names. We were saying the chairman task force, Babo Chako, because we cannot assess what we assess easily. But we do not know that you are doing it for our goods. It was later, we want more awareness on this issue of climate change, down to the grassroots, sir. And change also come with empowerment. On behalf of the Taraba women, we are calling on you, sir, that as this issue of climate change has become a worrisome issue to the women of Taraba State, we are calling for empowerment in the area of Chaco.
Thank you.
African Chaco, please, please allow me.
Please, please, let's take the next person so that His Excellency can answer. Please, ma'am. Please, please, we'll take one more so that.
Protocol. Permit me to first and foremost appreciate you for your strides in the educational sector. I remember my humble self-comrade Galea Nungamia Lodia, the former president of the National Union of Taraba State Students and the chairman of the National Association of Nigerian Students. Your Excellency, I want to, on behalf of the entire Taraba State students, appreciate you for the 50% slash in school fees, for the renovations in the institutions, most especially College of Nossin. Your Excellency, here is my question because of time. Your Excellency, you've slashed the school fees and done a lot. But this gesture is only to students who are within Taraba State, that is, students in institutions that are owned by the state. Your Excellency, what are your plans for students who are schooling in federal institutions within Taraba and Taraba State students, who we have majority of them schooling outside Taraba? What are your plans? Because scholarships have not been paid from the inception of this administration. So, Your Excellency, I want to know what plans you have, because majority of the students are all outside the state. Thank you very much, sir.
For the Sun newspaper. Your Excellency, throughout your campaign and even on inception, you were very emphatic that you promote, you encourage young entrepreneurs in the state. My concern is that you chose to produce uniforms, school uniforms, for schoolchildren. We have a lot of young tailors in the state, and they didn't get the contract. It would have actually boosted their businesses. We also have very good hands in shoemaking. So I think it will also be a good thing that subsequently you consider the young entrepreneurs in these fields in the state. Now, the question I have is about your plans for the Namne Bridge, because the rainy season is here, the federal government is not forthcoming, and the hardship there is extreme. What are you doing about the Namne Bridge? Thank you.
Point that to the state of internal roads, township roads within Jaliungo, the state capital. It will interest Your Excellency to know that more than half of roads within Jaliungo are either not tarred or those that were initially tarred have become so unmortarable. While Your Excellency is doing so much to lay the foundation for the prosperity of Taraba State and its development, we also want to implore you to please concentrate or pay more attention to the roads that within, inside the town. And secondly, Your Excellency, the state-owned media, that is the Taraba State Television, yeah, Television and the Taraba State Broadcasting Service, TSBs, they are in abject condition. Most, most days, they don't transmit at all, some for weeks and months. And the days they transmit, they transmit for a few hours and they go off air. So we are pleading with Your Excellency to please look into it and so that they can go back to their, to their past glories. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your spend. But if you read through my speech, all your questions are answered. Because some people don't like reading between lines and think through statements. That is why most time they still repeat what has been said. But for these few questions, let me just respond to them swiftly. The first person that asked question on free education. You see, if you are not a product of something, you can't build that thing. I'm a product of education. I know the value of education. I can invest anything in education because I know what I will get in return. Now, I did not just jump up and start talking about free education. Even before I became a governor, I've been sponsoring people's children. And before I became a governor, I've never held any executive position. I've sponsored more than 500 students in Korala Fai University. So I said to myself, if as an individual I can do this, the state should be able to do better. Now, people don't like change. People don't like change. What is the problem in this state? Poverty. That is why we are fighting. Now, when I declare free education, did you hear Muslim and Christian fighting? They have common problem, poverty. So all these fights are artificial. So now, parents have been relieved of this burden. And there's no any other person that can do it than the state. It's a sacrifice that the state have to make if you really want to build a state that withstands test of time. We cannot continue to remain stagnant. We must move forward. That is why I came with a moving forward agenda. So if you must move forward, there are certain steps that you must take. The only thing that I didn't do was to consult people, because I didn't want anybody to discourage me. When I declared free education, some people started, how? Not possible. I said, okay, let's see. One, I want no parent should pay for any exam for the children. Step one. Step two, teachers should be trained. Teachers welfare should be taken into consideration so that they can concentrate on the children. Step three, I said any copper that is posted in any school will be given additional incentive. As you are saying that Taraba State is a civil servant state. Who told us that Taraba is a civil servant state? It's because we have not been able to explore the natural resources that we have. That is why we narrow ourselves to just one thing. And I feel that that is bewitchment, something that's bewitching in the state, to see our state as a civil servant state, to see our state as a. Meanwhile, the whole world knows that Taraba State is blessed with this, blessed with that, blessed with this, but we are poor. But we have one of the highest number of otter schoolchildren. Then they created unnecessary insecurity problem for us so that we now reduce ourselves to nothing. But as somebody that knows what is doing, I know where I'm coming from and I know where I'm going. And I believe that this free education is going to work very well. As long as I remain here for the period you voted me in, and if you decide to reelect me, more innovation will come in the school sector. But all I need is data, information. We are working on the number of schools we have. Some of the ones we see, they are not accurate. The number of teachers, the number of students, and the condition of the school. If you take this road from here going to Ukari, all the government schools you see on the road, they are not fenced. Our children have been exposed to all kinds of danger. Anybody can just go into the school and carry children and go. Nobody will know. So all these are things that we're going to do to build new structures that can provide security, conducive environment for learning. And what I'm seeing is not my test. And it's not good for our children. All my children were not born in Taraba State. They were born outside the state. All my children did not school in Taraba State. All my children did not school in government schools. They were all in private schools. So I know the best I gave them, and I want the best for the poor children. And these resources belong to all of us, so we use it to give our children the best. So I want to assure you that it will work. And it must work. I have identified all the challenges. It took me time to remodel and remodel and remodel and to come up with the structure. And what you are seeing, the 60 schools we are building, they are going to be pilot projects. So by the time we look at them and they are okay, that is how we're going to rebuild all the schools to stand test of time. And every school is going to have all that is required for children to stay in school comfortably. We are working on that. It's work in progress, it's step by step, and we'll achieve it. Now, talking about, let me reach the other question that somebody was talking about, empowerment, uniforms and so on. You know, if you want to start something, you need to get it from where you know first, and then you bring it to test it. I'm aware that we have tailors, we have shoemakers, we have everything. But you see, what we are doing here, eh, we've, we've not trained like the shoemakers. You know, when you want to build a shoe, it's not to just go and cut plastic or rubber, put something, and then somebody will wear it. You see, your leg will be paining you. You have to test it, you have to measure it, you have to subject it to some certain conditions before you can wear shoes. But the way we are building the shoes here, everybody is just building, just to empower people to build. If it is slippers, it's a different thing. But when you're talking about school shoes, for those of you that have been wearing bata in those days, you know what I'm talking about. So we'll, we'll train our people, we'll retrain them and empower them. In the near future, they will be the one producing all these things. But for now, we want to see how we'll get it right. Well, you were asking about who are my partners. You see, sometime, Ubek is there, Subek is there, the World Bank is there, they have been in the state, they are doing their thing. But I'm coming with in a different direction, to guide them, to tailor all their support to the model that I feel is right for my state. Because when I'm building schools, I'm looking at the security, the safety, and the learning condition in which you will subject these children to. So whatever I'm doing, I measure them up. Then anybody can partner with me. But you see, when you go out to start talking, somebody can ask you, what have you done? So I want to do something first, and then we'll show anybody that want to partner with us. There are even Taraba citizens that want to do something. There's community effort, you have all these banks, eh, communication company, they are all here. When the time comes, when we launch this 60 pilot project, everybody will make input. So we'll get more people that will partner with us. For now, we are doing it with those that we know. The unemployment issue for the youth is a general problem in the country. And that is why we are establishing a youth commission. There's going to be a youth commission, and we're going to put the young people there, and then they will work and tell us what is best for them. And then we'll work with them to see that we mop up our youth in the streets. So let's work together and see how we can achieve that, because it's, it's our collective responsibility and problem. So, Mrs. Punam, you were, you talking about, you were appreciating the women and so on, and you're talking about inclusion of women in security meetings. We have some women in uniform that attend security meeting with us. Am I right? So like, as a soldier, we have women that are military people, but we don't take them to the battlefield. We assign them responsibility where they are supposed to be. Now, if, as a woman, you have informations, pass it to your husband so that your husband will bring it up to the war room to be discussed. So that we will not, it will not be overused or overburdened with so many things. So it will be good for you to share it with your husband, and then you will bring it up. If we need you, we'll, we'll ask him to bring you. Thank you. On climate change, you have the commissioner for Environment and Climate Change, who is a woman. Please, I don't want to do so much on that. Sit with her and think out and work out the best solution that you think will help us with respond to the effect of climate change. You can see how overheated the weather has been all this way. It's because of the trees that have been cut down. So we have to start thinking of planting trees and replanting again. Galea, you were talking about 50% slice in school fees, which is good, and you want it extended to other Taraba students that are in other schools. Yes, we, we have been thinking about that. Already, we have extended that service to Nigerian law school. Is the commissioner for justice here? Yes, I think we have been giving support to Nigerian, our students in law school, right? Good. So we, we are going to do that. We have, we have, we have scholarship board. So we activate that scholarship board to make it very, very functional and effective. But what we need is data. How many students do we have in various schools? So we're going to work with the Ministry of Science and Technology, Digital Economy, the Youth Council and the rest to be able to give us the informations we need on our children that are in schools outside the state so that we can see how we can reach out to them. At least it's also good for us to know how they are doing or performing. Questions from the journalist, the one writing for Sun newspaper. Well, I've touched on the youth something concerning Namne Bridge. The road itself is a federal road, they said. We have written to Federal Ministry of Works to hand over the road to the state so that we can see how we can rebuild that road to serve us better as we are looking into the future. Already, Krembo has been on the road. We have been having meetings with Krembo. They have submitted their, their budget for the road, their bill. From Jaliungo to Ukari, from Jaliungo-Zing to the border between Taraba and Adamawa, the bill they submitted is almost our 2025 budget. So these are challenges. But one of the reason why we must do that road is because we need it. As we open up the state, we need to have good road for our transporters. Now, we've discussed with Krembo to work out modalities on how we'll be doing the payment because we don't have much resources for now. And we are almost reaching understanding before the bridge collapsed. So when the bridge collapsed, we tried to engage them so that they can do the bridge. Then the Northeast Commission came that they would do the bridge. I said, okay, fine. If you are going to do the bridge, I want you to use this contractor that is already on the road so that we not have different, different contractor coming to do something that we cannot control. So we want to, we want to make use of this contractor that have done this road and is maintaining the road so that it will be continued. So they agreed. So they have been working on it because the minister too visited the place. So while they are doing that, so the state, we have been looking. And I called the contractor last week and I asked him, now rainy season has come. Our people in the south has been cut off. Now, what do we do? They said they are going to work to create another place for us to use as an alternative bridge before they will rebuild the bridge. So I believe that between now, last week, I think last week also some engineers came from the Northeast Commission to look at the bridge, to assess and assess, they keep assessing, they assessing. So we are also putting pressure on them. But outside that, we are also thinking the measure we are going to take so that we will not keep waiting for them. While we are doing that, the bridge before School of Nusim was already cutting off. So we have to use our own Ministry of Works to start fixing those bridges so that all the bridges will not start collapsing. So now, we are faced with all these challenges. People want their salary paid, people want their pension paid, people want this done, people want that done, and so on and so forth. But the resources is limited. But these are things that the government will be responsible for. And also, it's not only road. It's not only road. What about water? What about light? Because now they are talking about Namne Bridge, people have forgotten the airport. You did not even thank me for the airport. I deliberately removed the airport from my speech to see whether somebody will mention it. Now, because you are flying now, you don't want to talk about it again. Now, coming back to my speech, I did mention that on assumption of office, Taraba State, the whole state, the whole state has no developmental master plan. So how will you be building roads? How will you be building houses without a plan? They say we have mineral resources everywhere in the state, all the local government. Some people's houses now are on top of gold. Like in my place where I built one small church, somebody said there is element of gold there. One of my friends said, let's uproot the church. So you see, I don't want us to be building blindly. We need to be patient. We need to come up with master plan so that you build a state that everybody will love to come to. Not everybody just building anything they want on top of anywhere. You don't even know which land is good for farming, which land is good for this, which land is good for that. But thank God, we've been able to achieve that within nine months. I think the Ministry of the Beautiful Land, Tajis and the rest, they worked with the consultant and they've been able to come up with a master plan. And we've also sent it to the House of Assembly and they've also approved it. So we'll soon start implementing the master plan, not only for Jaliungo, all the system, local government. So we are working according to program. Some people say, oh, no road, here are no road, there are no road. No, yes, we are coming to that, but you must plan. All the road in the state, the street lights, everything, we all do them by the grace of God time, but we are following them up. And in order not to keep depending on contractors, we've been able to acquire some graders, some equipment for construction. And they are with Ministry of Works. All we are trying to do is to find a way to mobilize resources to give them so that they can be doing those roads. So please be patient, very soon you will see roads coming up. But the most important thing, we are doing the first thing first. After that, then we can begin to build. You must have a foundation before you build on top of the foundation. If not, it cannot stand test of time. Now, I'm very comfortable that I've been able to correct and also build a solid foundation with policies in the state that will help us to build and also attract investors. It's not only the government that build estates. When you create a peaceful environment, a conducive environment, not the one we'll be fighting ourselves. When we create that peaceful environment, it will attract investors. And that's why we had the investment summit. And all of you have seen the number of people that came. And I thank God that all of you have seen it and you did not say, sorry, forgive us. We say you always travel, you always travel, you always travel. But now we have seen the result of your traveling. Nobody has said that yet. So we believe that these investors, by the time they come to invest, they will also add value to what we are doing, working with our master plan. Already, we have signed an M O U with C C C C on development. So very soon, by the grace of God, you begin to see changes. So the Namne Bridge is in progress. You cannot build a bridge in one day. It has to go through a lot of processes. So let's be patient, we're going to get it right. If, if people were monitoring, people were monitoring that bridge, like the ministries that are responsible for, the local government, they are monitoring that bridge, they would have given information on that bridge before now. But I just had one day that Namne Bridge has collapsed. There are some bridges that they gave me sign. They told me this bridge has started showing some cracks. I sent the response team immediately because I don't want it to be another Namne Bridge. So please, if you watch any bridge that is having some of these challenges, please let us know so that we can... There are so many things that we are battling with. I will not be able to solve all this problem in one day because there are no resources. But by the grace of God, since we have good intention, God will help us, we'll get it right. For the Taraba Broadcasting and Media Houses, the Ministry of Information, we handle that. So we believe that very soon we'll get this thing done. We are doing it gradually, you know, step by step, we'll get things done. So once again, I want to thank you and also let you know that by, in the very short time, you will see the North East on Namne Bridge. Even if they are not there after the contractor, that I'm going to mobilize him to give him something, let him just go on the bridge and start working on there. But meanwhile, he should be able to create a passage for us. So once again, I want to thank every one of you, especially the security agencies for all your support, your response and your professionalism in the way and manner you go about your business in the state. And for our traditional rulers, thank you very much. We continue to work together to see that we create an environment that our people will prosper. For our youth, be patient, trust us, have confidence in us. We have good plans for you. All right, thank you very much. Please step behind, we have dinner here for everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you so, so very much. Thank you very much.